Next up is strategic direction number one, increase measurable student learning and reduce achievement gaps as we provide equitable student opportunities.
Excellent, thank you very much. As Sam makes his way and Dave make their way to the podium, I just want to introduce this a bit. As part of our ongoing updates to ensure operational oversight for our strategic plan and district goals, this presentation update about our educational equity and excellence priority work was actually scheduled to be given at the November 9th school board meeting. That agenda ended up being really full, so we moved that to November 22nd, and then when we needed to recess and adjourn, we were unable to do that. The presentation you'll see tonight is like much of what the original format was. We want to provide information about the students that we serve, about the work in which we've been engaged, the data demonstrating the need to deepen our equity work, and a chance to see the goals that were established in August. Additionally, we'll share responses to the hateful and racist video posted by an adolescent in our community, and next steps to address racism and hate speech in our schools. As you all know, much has happened since November 9th, when this presentation was originally scheduled. The racist video is called Cause Pain, Trauma, Stress, Harm, and it has reinforced the urgency in our school district and community to be bold and to collaborate with our stakeholders as we deepen our work around equity and inclusion, especially for our BIPOC students and all students who have been marginalized. While we've been engaged in district-wide equity work for the past several years, we've always known that equity work is ongoing. We know we have much more to do, as evidenced by our achievement gaps, but more importantly, by the voices of our students who are telling us that the work we're doing is not making the impact that they need on their lived experiences in our schools. We've heard some of their experiences, their concerns, and we've also heard from students some possible action steps in making things better. Equity work is about hearts and minds, it's about the will and the skill of people. It's adaptive, it's not technical work, and while there are no easy answers to end racism, homophobia, and hatred that harms the safety and well-being of others, we know we must interrupt practices, actions, words, and systems that harm the dignity and well-being of our students. We do not tolerate racism, bullying, harassment, or hate speech, and we must act decisively each time we receive a report. As a district, we have responsibility and are accountable to do better for all students in our schools, to listen to their voices, and to improve their experiences in our schools. That's our work, and that's my commitment. You'll hear about this work tonight as Sam Oak, who was just hired in July to assist in the leadership of our equity work, begins the presentation and will also be assisted by Dave Brown, our administrator at Bridges ALC, to update the board and community on our work. And with that, Sam, I'll hand it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stallow. Good evening, Chair Well, members of the board. Tonight in my presentation, I'll be covering how equity is embedded in our mission and strategic direction, who our students are, and looking at closely at our diversity in our district here, equity work in PLSAS to this point, and also the urgency for continued equity work and inclusion work in our district, and our plans to move forward. Before I start with that, though, this is our mission here. Our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. And as you can see there in this document here, we have our core values, our vision, and our strategic direction, and it is the very first strategic direction where you would find our equity work. So our first strategic direction is to increase measurable student learning and reduce achievement gaps as we provide equitable opportunity, student opportunities through personalized learning and student engagement. And then priority work number three under the first strategic direction is the equity priority work there. The district's E-12 Educational Equity and Excellence Plan to close achievement gaps will continue to focus on the implementation of culturally responsive teaching strategies and learning environments, family engagement, and professional development strategies. To put it simply, we want to make sure that all students have what they need to be successful. We want to ensure everyone feels a sense of belonging, and we want everyone to be respected for who they are regardless of their lived experiences. This is the member of our core leadership team. You have myself, along with Jeff Marshall, the activities director at the high school, Dave Brown, our ALC coordinator, who I have with me today that will be presenting with me, Jennifer Malter, and Richard Kusinski are elementary principals from Glenda and Laola Delago, Mark Paulson and Julie Segal are assistant principals over at the high school and Hidden Oaks Middle School. And this is just one team that we have doing the work here. Our core leadership team oversees the priority work and also makes sure that we're hitting our goals as we go along with the work here. But we know that equity work, like I mentioned in the past, is work that we do together. So along with our leadership team, we have other teams and committees that are committed to doing this work. Through that, we have our equity conversations group. This is our community-wide and in the district. This is our coffee and conversations that we have, and also our key stakeholder groups as well. We also have our District Educational Equity and Excellence Advisory Council. This is a group that we are forming as we speak here that will include students, community members, staff, and members of our priority work team. And I understand that board members will be assigned to this advisory group as well. We have our district equity and excellence priority work team, and so our teams here are divided into advisory groups and then work team groups, which I will share later in a graphic that I have at the end of our presentation. And then we have my department that I oversee personally, which includes our American Indian Coordinator, our cultural liaisons, the CLR leads who do the professional development around culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, our English learner teachers, and also in our buildings, we have our school leadership teams, which include our equity leadership team or equity work being done at the built level. Along with this as well is not only our equity department that is focused on equity work, but equity work takes place in all other departments in our school district. HR has a piece around equity. Our teaching and learning team has pieces around equity as well. So getting into our student demographics here, a little bit, as you can see, this is the demographic that we pull from MDE. About 77% of our students are white, and then our ethnic breakdown is about 5% evenly in our Hispanic, Asian, Black, and two or more student population, and we have almost 1% of our American Indian population in our school district. Enrollment by other categories, we have a little bit, about 3% are English learners, 12% sped, and 11% free and reduced price lunch. This mirrors pretty well across the state in terms of our spread and free and reduced price lunch. We're a little bit lower on our English learner population. Looking at the first two data pieces, one might say that Prior Lake is not a very diverse district. However, in Prior Lake here, we have over 60 languages spoken in our district here. Our top five being Spanish, Somali, Russian, Vietnamese, and Khmer, which is the name of the language of the Cambodian speakers. Along with that diversity, we also have 133 students who identify as American Indian specifically, which is also one of the larger demographics identification in the state as well. We have first and second generation refugee. About a couple months ago, you heard a story on Fox 9 that we resettled, you know, our very first Afghan refugee into our community. We have students from all over the world, from six to the seven continents, and we also have one of the largest speaking Russian population in the state here. Outside of Hennepin County and Scott County as a whole here, Prior Lake would be the largest. So with that here, I'll turn it over to Dave.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Stallow, board members. My name is David Brown, and I have the privilege of leading and being the administrator at Bridges ALC as well as Laker Online. It's good to see you all tonight. I want to talk a little bit about the focus of district equity work over the past six years. We began prioritizing equity work six years ago with culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies for all staff. Since then, we have also engaged in an umbrella of programming to support equity and diversity in our schools. That includes social and emotional learning, elevating student voices, and conducting student engagement around these issues, our building instructional leadership teams, our staff data days, professional development days reviewing data, our data retreats empowering learning teams to understand the data, which drives better instructional practices, and support all of our students. We also have enhanced programming to include work from our East African and Spanish-speaking liaisons, in addition to our American Indian Coordinator, as well as collaboration with our Coalition of Teachers of Color, as well as our board policy review and equity in resolution. As we began this district-wide equity work in 2016, we had a team research and determine the framework that would best begin our journey. Our team recommended at that time to partner with Dr. Shiroki Holly. Dr. Holly is a national leader in providing professional development and cultural responsiveness. With Dr. Holly and his team's partnership, we began to implement the culturally and linguistically responsive teaching strategies as this framework to begin our district work at that time. As part of this framework, we focused on the many rings of culture and the multiple diversity that impacts student learning. And I can tell you, as an administrator leading this work, I have personally seen the effectiveness of these teaching strategies and methodologies at a building level when we implemented these strategies. And I would tell you that my teachers would say that this work has been some of the most effective strategies to engage students in their learning. As we focused on the rings of culture and listened to the needs of our students from student leadership groups and other engagements, we have recognized the need for deeper work around racial identity and other marginalized groups as we consider cultures around age and gender and religious class, national, and other orientation and ethnic cultures. The Center for Advancing Learning Through Equity Through Culturally Responsive Teaching Strategies is to implement teaching strategies that increase overall student engagement, to dig deeper into data, to understand and respond to inequities that we see in students that are being underserved in our schools, and to give all students outrageous love so that they know they are cared for in our schools and our community. We implemented the Voices Framework at the start of the 2020-21 school year, and based on student interviews at that time, some of which were from my school, and self-reported staff feedback that was collected after the facilitated session, we identified five key themes to drive the evolution of our work around equity and beyond CLR that we began in 2016. The recommendations from the frameworks and what we heard from students and staff will continue to inform our work, and you can see the key recommendations there. So as we have been engaged in our work throughout the past six years, we know we have much more to do. Over the past six years, you can see all the work that we've done. We focused on engaging families and training our staff through culturally responsive strategies. We partnered with Jordan and Chocabi to run a series of caring and committed conversations. All staff were trained in culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning strategies. We provided training and resources to enhance staff data literacy to make informed decisions. We've added a district strategic direction to highlight the importance and the necessity of social and emotional learning. We've created the Laker Learning Compass, focused on learning being personalized, purposeful, and empowered, and providing learning experiences that are more student-centered and are more student-driven rather than being teacher-directed. We've collaborated with other school districts to support the alignment of reimagined Minnesota strategies in our district work. Prior Lake Savage's schools held a World Cafe around community conversations. We've integrated equity through peer coaching with student engagement. We have attention signals and response and discussion and movement protocols. We've introduced the Voice Framework. We've passed a school board resolution that showed our commitment to equity and inclusion, and we've hired a Director of Equity and Inclusion. While this has been our work and equity for many years, we understand that we have a lot more to do. You just saw the amount of diversity that Mr. Oak presented, that we have a large part of our Prior Lake Savage area school community. Schools are places where all students should feel validated, affirmed, loved, connected, and included no matter what race or culture or combinations thereof that they come to us with. We will be working harder than ever to ensure that is true for all Prior Lake Savage area schools.
And as we reflect on the work over the past six years, we also take a look at data to see where we're at. And as you can see with this data here that looks at the gap between our MCA reading scores of white students and students of color, we see that the gap still exists. Again, this is looking at different student groups here. There are third grade students in 2017, third grade students in 2018, third grade students in 2019, and third grade students in 2021. This is not growth data, but this data here just showcases the point that there's still a gap that we still need to work in terms of trying to close it. One thing that we can say that we are doing quite well here in our school district is the disproportionality that other districts see in terms of special ed identification or students receiving special ed services between white students and our students of color. We don't see that disproportionality here in Prior Lake Savage area schools. We also don't see that in terms of enrollment in AP classes as well. However, we look at our SEL and equity work crossover, we do see that in terms of students feeling that there's at least one adult who cared for them in school here, there are some gaps that we can work towards improving ourselves. Our elementary students, we're ranging at 95% and above, whereas our secondary students, it is quite a bit lower here at only around 80 to 85%. In terms of what we see around the question, my culture, religion, or ethnic heritage is respected by other students, this is filled out by our stakeholder surveys at the end of 2021 there. And as you can see, there are room for improvement in this area as well. Elementary students, again, rating it a little bit higher, and then secondary students rating lower. And then in the 2020-21 year, this is that COVID year here, we see that drop in the scores rated by our students. So there's definitely still work to do, and we've got more work to do. These are the teams that I alluded to earlier. Here's a graphic of them. The circular rings around the outside are Equity and Advisory Council, Coffee and Conversations with the Community, our Equity Department, and our district stakeholders act as support and advisory teams. And then in the center, we have our Priority Work Team, including our leadership team, our Priority Work Team that includes students, staff, teachers, and administrators, and then our Building Equity Teams, which are either specific equity teams in the building or the built teams, the leadership team at the building there focusing on equity work. So we have work teams, and then we have advisory and support teams around the outside. This is the goal that we've set up from our Priority Leadership Team there, looking at our priority work. So our goal then is to build strong leadership for the work at the building levels. Our goal is to also engage community and student voices to do our work here and having a strong structure to do so. You can see some of that taking place in our monthly coffee and conversations that we have with our community, and also the city now has jumped on to support and sponsor that event as well. We want to continue professional development in our district. We've done a lot of work with teachers and focusing on classroom engagement and teaching strategies. We want to also look at improving the culture of our building and doing work where that is felt at the student level. And then the continued work on engaging student voices in this work here.
Thanks, Sam. Well, some of the goals that Sam just talked about that were set in August have been underway. The horrific race event occurred with the posting of the racist video, and I want to be sure the board and our community members are aware of some of the immediate actions that we took and how this action will continue to guide our work. The investigation was launched immediately. We have communicated with our community throughout. In collaboration with the Savage PD, we did have students go home the day early with knowledge of a protest that was not sponsored by students in our community. We participated in a joint press conference with the city of Savage. We hosted the Coffee and Conversations as Sam talked about that was previously planned, collaborated with multiple different community groups as they're supporting our work in launching anti-racist racism work. We've been in the process of looking at and reviewing our policies and procedures to make sure that we've got clear and consistent opportunities for both reporting investigations and ensuring that our responses to that are also consistent systemically. We also have taken a look at the PD and training, and specifically with leaders on December 1st. We asked them and expected them to then work with their staff to acknowledge the racist video, to discuss strategies, to respond to racial comments and microaggressions. Obviously, this will be ongoing work, and to create an inclusive climate where equity will be felt at the student level, and I think Sam spoke to that as well. We continue to work on procedures for restorative practices alongside teacher leaders to address the negative culture and to compact the impact of racism. We reached out to districts who have experienced similar situations, and they've been very helpful in providing resources and some of the action planning that they did when they also dealt with the issues that we're dealing with right now. And as Sam also said, we've continued to collaborate with the three cities and are grateful for a collaborative approach to supporting our students and families. Thanks, Sam. You're going to talk specifically about, we've got some specifics at each level. Thanks.
Yeah, so these are the immediate actions that we're taking at Prior Lake High School. At the morning, when the video broke up, administrators at the high school there made a statement to students and staff and families condemning it. We pulled together a group of our Student Advisory Council. These are student leaders from our cultural groups, student council, and even student athletes. We met on the day after the video was released to discuss our response, and we have continued to meet with them on a regular basis. We're actually meeting with them again tomorrow here, along with the Prior Lake Rotary to discuss action steps that we can take to promote anti-racism work. We've met at the class levels, too. The high school principal, John Bezek, held class level meetings, splitting each grade levels into two sections, into three sections, actually, and brought them into the auditorium to address the video and how to support each other when racial or discriminatory incidences occur. Our Coalition of Teachers of Color at the high school held healing circles and met with BIPOC students, while other students still had that opportunity to meet with their counselors to address their needs here in terms of responses to the videos. I Prior Lake High School also used December 1st to talk about microaggression, racial slurs, and taking a stance of zero tolerance around derogatory terms stated in the schools. Also, student leadership groups attended caring and committed conversations. This was originally scheduled for December 10th in partnership with Jordan School District and the Ordway. However, it was canceled due to the snowstorm, and it has now been rescheduled to the 21st of December here. We also have a Student Advisory Council partnering with Prior Lake Rotary, which I mentioned earlier, and we're also conducting a review of our procedures for addressing discrimination and tolerance and racial incidences. And then our Building Equity Teams at the high school, specifically here, meet to identify areas where work can be done on future professional development needs of staff and opportunities to make connections and support students.
Thank you, Sam. Board members and community, I also wanted to share some of the things that I've led at my side at Bridges ALC. Namely, the day that the racist video broke, we made statements to students and staff and families condemning it. That day, I provided specific direction to my support team to increase student support and make sure they are being proactive in that work. Additionally, I provided direction to my teachers to allow flexibility for students affected by the video. That day, I held personally several one-on-one meetings with students that were affected in various ways and did that throughout the week. We also sent multiple communications to families. We've initiated a book study that has been actually part of our system of continuous improvement around ed equity, a book study entitled "So You Want to Talk About Race." We've conducted a school-wide caring and committed conversation around microaggressions for the entire student body. We held that last Thursday. We partnered with the Prior Lake Rotary for a mentorship program called Strive, and right after the racist video was posted, I provided directions to our mentor to help guide their support and provide that engagement when they came into our schools for their mentorship. We have a student leadership group meeting this week to provide and engage and elevate their voices around what we heard last week and what I will continue to get feedback on. We are planning a parent engagement for caring and committed conversations around microaggressions on Monday, December 20. Our staff is, we've had staff meetings ensuring consistency and consistency of expectations around incidents of racism, bigotry, and hate speech, as well as additional professional development and how to support students affected by these issues. And we're also conducting a review of our policies and procedures for addressing disintegration, intolerance, and racial incidents. Furthermore, there's been work at the middle schools at the elementary level and early childhood. The middle schools had a staff meeting to discuss the impact of the video. Both middle schools, the administrators and counselors visited classrooms and discussed being a difference maker versus a difference taker. Communications were sent out to families. Invitations were extended to students to join them in student voice groups. They continue to strengthen their GPS to address social and emotional needs of students. In elementary, at the elementary level, principals spent time at the December 1st early release acknowledging the racist video and reinforcing procedures and shared resources to support what should be done when a racist comment is made. At Laola Delago, they had two opportunities for staff to come together in healing circles to listen, to learn, share, and support. They've strengthened their responsive classroom practices to address social and emotional needs of students. And at the early childhood level, you can see that they've utilized early resources to inform staff about the resources around equity and inclusion, and to connect with liaison to improve engagement practices to parents of BIPOC children.
As you just heard from both Sam and Dave, our responses to the racist video are aligned to those original goals that the team set forth in August and have been aligned to some of the work in which we've been engaged. Certainly prioritizing the student voice has been something that we've been working toward and continuing to try to do at all of our schools. And again, some of these examples are replicas of what you saw earlier in some of the breakouts by age group, but just wanted to show how they align to those themes of those goals. So student voices, families and community engagement, and then thanks, Sam. The policies and procedures would probably be the one place that didn't originally, we didn't originally have called out as much on those goals, and we've recognized the need to ensure that our policies, procedures, and practices are aligned and consistent. So that's work that we've been engaged and will continue to work on that to make sure that that's true at every school. The professional development that we've worked on and to ensure staff voice as well as communication. We've learned that communication and collaboration are really vital to the work, and Sam, you can speak a little bit to that next slide.
Yes, so this is the Coffee and Conversation piece that I talked about earlier. We had planned an event on Coffee and Conversation since our priority work started in August there. We planned for it to happen early on, but then it got held back until November. It was planned prior to the video taking place there, but certainly the events of the video did add to it. We had close to 60 participants from the community being part of that, and now we've engaged the cities of Savage, Prior Lake, Credit River, and the township of Spring Lake who have all come on board now to sponsor it. This next event will be held at the Club Prior there, which is the Prior Lake Library and Senior Center. There's a capacity for 120, so we'll see how many people we get at the event there. Again, we're doing this here is all in alignment of our mission, which is to educate Again, we're doing this here is all in alignment of our mission, which is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, and we are committed and all-in to doing this work.
Thank you for all that information. It's a lot of information, which I think is very needed at this time. I know we haven't really had a chance as a group to have the conversation, so I guess I'd open it up to board members right now if you have questions for Sam, comments. Go ahead, Mary, if you want to go.
So a couple of questions, and some of which I'm not expecting to have answers to tonight because they're part of, I think, the process that's being discussed. But that last statement that was made, did you say the school district engaged with Credit River and Savage and all that?
Yeah, we came together as a city, as a community with Prior Lake and Savage, and in that discussion, there was a discussion to include Credit River and then the township, and we even talked about including SMSC as well.
Good. I don't think the school district, I think we were part of that, but I don't think we actually let it, engaged it.
Actually, that's incorrect, Mary. The Coffee and Conversations, Sam was the one that originally started all of that. So when we met with the city of Prior Lake and the city of Savage, we offered up the monthly meetings that the district had planned on sponsoring with the community if the cities wanted to be a part of that. So the dates that the district originally had hosted and Sam had planned to lead now will be done in collaboration with the cities.
So it was the school district's idea to collaborate with Savage and Credit River and bring everybody else in there?
Correct. I convened a meeting with both the city of Savage and the city of Prior Lake mayors, city administrators, and chief of police.
The, you know, one of the issues we've had for a long time, I was part of the Savage community discussions also, I attended those, I didn't lead them, is that we get the same people showing up all the time, and they're the people that are already engaged in the equity and inclusion. How are we going to engage community members that really need to be part of this for the education and ones that wouldn't be naturally inclined to show up to these meetings for the discussion?
That's a very good question, and I do fully understand and agree that equity work needs to be work that we do together. So it does need everyone to come together here and have this difficult discussion. I think we are getting closer it by having the cities join us because the school district can't do this alone here. I am open to having a discussion with anybody to move this work forward because our students really need it and our parents and community really needs it as well.
Sam, I do want to just also add that the original Coffee and Conversation, we did invite people and then opened it up more. So I think there were 67 people or 70 people at that first meeting?
There were 70 people total if we count staff members as well, including community members, yes.
So we did extend, because we had those emails, we extended that invitation again for this community-wide event. But I know Kristi and her communication director colleagues in the cities have also, you know, tried to make sure that this was widely advertised, and we're hoping that, you know, we know this is a busy time of year to hold this later this week, but we're hoping that if people know that this will be a monthly event in our community and have those dates, that we can continue the conversation and those agendas will really be driven by the participants.
Yeah, and just one thing I would add, too. I think when we provide opportunities for our parents to engage in these in intentional ways, I think that invites and promotes a wider audience as well, so I think that's going to be an important step forward.
I think we have to do more, too. We can't just say it's the Coffee and Conversation that's it. There's got to be more work that needs to be done to engage different factions of our community and people throughout our community. So Coffee and Conversation is a great event. It pulls in a lot of people, but there's more work on top of that that needs to be done, and I think we here as a team here are fully committed to that work.
One other question. I did have more, but I want to give everyone else a chance. Obviously, when something like the video goes viral, we take action, but there's a lot of stuff that preceded, that allowed or empowered or enabled that video to go viral and people to feel like it was okay to do that or similar to things. So when we talk about zero tolerance going forward, what is the definition of that? Has that actually been defined so that we can preempt something like this from happening?
So we are working on the policies and procedures for that and laying out a clearer plan for that. We do mean zero tolerance, so that means that whether it's a microaggression or macroaggression, at the very minimum, there'll be a consequence of having that conversation with an administrator so that restorative piece, that education piece gets moved forward so that we can start changing this culture. We know that suspension, detention, and expulsion does not change the culture of racism that we have in our community and even in our schools. And we can argue about how little, how much that is, but we know that it is there. So we do have to come together and work on changing that culture, and that comes with the education piece as well.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things for you, Sam. So just kind of piggybacking on a different theme that Mary already touched on. So recognizing that we have more than 60 languages, multiple cultures represented here in the community, and just kind of thinking of if we get some of the same players that who are actively engaged, you know, what strategies are we using to actually reach those who are English language learners?
Yeah, I do think we've got to look at our diversity for sure as an opportunity. And when we talk about equity work that goes beyond the training that we have and the PD that we have, the work of equity is to build scaffolds and remove barriers. So it's not, we can't do this work alone here. If we're talking about our diverse population, we do need them included in this work here so that we can hear what the barriers are in order for us to be able to address it. And when we do hear and know what those barriers are, we have to really commit ourselves and hold ourselves accountable to addressing those barriers.
And are the cultural liaisons a part of helping to, in your case, question about how can we, instead of just putting a flyer out there, how are we going to ensure?
I think we have resources and opportunities here. We have our American Indian Coordinator that is provided by our, you know, American Indian Education Funds and other grants that will allow her to work here. And, you know, that is already guided to the A-PAC and the family and parent committees that are already taking place. I think we can expand that, too, and look at more parent groups out there for our language learners as well because we have to engage them really to know, you know, what their needs are.
Absolutely, yeah. And to reach out to them in a culturally responsive sort of way where...
And I think one thing that I'll add there is equity work is not reactive. It needs to be done in a proactive fashion. So engaging our staff, either our American Indian Coordinator, our Spanish liaison, or our East African liaison, to really be able to reach out to our families and be able to engage their interests and bring them in as partners into our work here will be critical.
All right. And I have questions on one additional topic. Slide 15, the Voices Framework. You identified five, yeah, five different themes. So as we went through the presentation, I just kind of kept that in mind of staff do not feel equipped to handle racially charged issues. Students feel the use of racial slurs are prevalent. Some of these different themes and just kind of looking through the professional development and the different actions taken. How confident are you that all of those progressive steps are going to make a difference with these five components in the framework?
Well, I think we talk about our work, that our work needs to be felt at the student level. So I think these five pieces here will help us get to that student level for sure. I am quite confident, just because we have strong student leaders that are helping us out with this work as well, and we have our administrators and our teachers who are engaging them and supporting this work, along with our community members and organizations, much like the Prior Lake Rotary coming in to support us in this work. Dave, you want to add to that here?
Yeah, thank you. So I would say that this slide right here has been like the guiding principle to make sure that my thinking and planning and our conversations are really, really meeting this spectrum of issues here. And so one of the key pieces was the fact that our students weren't necessarily feeling all of the work that we've done over the past six years, and that absolutely has to change immediately. They need to feel it. They need to understand that support. They need to be a part of that. And so having this as guiding principles will absolutely be how we prioritize our thinking and efforts and energies around our work around inclusion and equity.
Sam, thanks for leading us through this work. It's really hard, and we need it to be more student-facing and those student voices heard, and I know and I believe in you in that. My question that I have is around our student advisory council. So knowing these things, right, the themes, and knowing that we're bringing different leaders from our high school community together, which is where we show, I think, probably the biggest need at the moment, what do you envision for that advisory council moving forward, and what's some of the work that you're hearing coming out of that?
Yep, so a lot of the big work coming out at the moment here now is in terms of planning with Prior Lake Rotary and doing an anti-racism campaign, and the students have brought out a lot of great ideas from, you know, stickers to posters, to flyers, to student-led events with assemblies and speakers. So there are a lot of ideas that are coming out of that, and Prior Lake Rotary has come in to help us organize with those voices and those ideas along with our administrative team there at the high school. I think along with that, empowering them to hold conversations with staff and also their fellow students as well in terms of helping us come together to address this work because everyone is affected by it. And I think it is time to talk about our diversity and our differences here all across the board, from gender to ethnicity to race, and really it starts with understanding those differences that we can move forward together.
If I could just add, too, I love the question. I'm keenly aware that as a white bald man that's 50 years old, I don't have the lived experiences of our students of color. And so by providing an opportunity for elevating and prioritizing their voices, to me, that's really the key, to make sure that we provide spaces and places where our BIPOC students can let us know how they're feeling and what they're seeing, and that's going to be really the pipeline to us having successful and key work in this area.
I think one of the other things, Amy, I'd just like to add is, thanks, Dave. In addition to that, we got a summary of some of the outcomes of the healing circles that our students participated in, and with that summary was also five specific concerns and five potential action steps, which we reviewed as an administrative team already to see how do we align, especially some of the professional developments and some of those things with those concerns. So I think whatever way we continue to elevate the voices of students so that we're making plans around their needs, because at the end of the day, that's where we're falling short right now, is that we're hearing from kids that our work isn't impacting at the student level in the ways that we would want and intended.
I think just one more specific, as this slide here talks about staff needing that support, too. We are launching some training around Speak Up there that Seema Patini is helping us out with, and at the moment here, we are piling it with 50 teachers here, and we'll see where it goes from there, there. But we are looking at some training to allow our staff to interrupt and step in when they hear derogatory slurs or racism being committed in our schools.
And to support student voice when they speak up.
Support student voice, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just briefly, I'm very encouraged to hear about the engagement with the cities and with community groups because I do feel like we're ground zero, but this community needs to come together completely. So having Rotary involved, having community groups involved along with the cities, and I'm so glad that you reached out to them and got their participation, I think that's really important. I'm just wondering if you could quickly share, I think for people who are listening and watching, the Coffee and Conversations, can you just elaborate a little bit about how that works and what that looks like for people so they get an idea of what we're doing?
Yeah, so the Coffee and Conversation, the idea is for community members to come together and be heard. So we do have guiding questions that we ask the community. The first guiding question was what has been done around the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion and in response to recent events, and also whether it's the work, the continued work or the lack of work that's been done in the past, what would you like to see happen in our community here? So that was the first two guiding questions. We are in the middle of brainstorming the next few series of guiding questions here. And what happens is the community members, along with students, staff, city officials will be there this time around, too, will be situated at small groups with tables, and they'll carry on those, have those discussions, and then there'll be a share out at the end. So everyone will get, you know, will hear what was being talked about at the different tables. My administrative assistant is also there, and she collects all the notes and then emails it out to all the participants after the event is done.
You know, I know this is different, but I think I just want to share and remind the board, I know we were a part of it years ago, but when I think about the outcome of this and what happens when you get voices of a diverse stakeholder group together to determine action plans and next steps, I think a lot about the Reimagine Minnesota work that metropolitan school districts were engaged in, and we hosted one of those world cafes. I think there were 250 people here from Eden Prairie, from Shakopee, and from Prior Lake, and I think there ended up being 3,000 total voices in that project, which now sits as nine strategies that school districts across the metro are using to continue to reimagine a better education system for all students in Minnesota. And if you recall, our district priority work is also aligned to those nine strategies. So again, the power of what came out of that and the action to follow, I believe, can be the work that our community continues to do to drive change here.
One other quick thing, if I may. Can you tell me about the involvement of the CTOC and how they've been supported and how they're involved as well?
Yeah, so the COTC were the group that led the healing circles over at the high school there, and they've also worked closely with Seema Patini in the past. She's also coming on the invitation of the COTC to do the February 21st PD day there on Humanize My Hoodie, which is a program that talks about race equity in, you know, in schools here. So that is some of the work that the CTOC has done. I've also been in connection with them, and we've been communicating as well in terms of what next steps we need to do to move forward.
Thanks, Sam.
I'm going to make one comment that I know has come forward from some feedback that I think is, I think it is an important step, and honestly, we used to do it in the past and in years past, and I think it might be something good just to provide transparency to the public, is our handbooks. I think our policies in relation to this, it's not the actual policy itself, it's the enactment of the policy and what happens. I mean, that's obviously what we've been talking about. So the word's on the paper, but it's the action. And so a comment that came in and it brought me back to years ago when we did this was student handbooks, and parents see those each and every time, and that is our policies actually being brought forward into actual student handbook, and to have the transparency of, you know, parents have to come through each year and say, yep, I've read the student handbook. I think bringing those back to the board level so that we can see how those play out in our schools because the basis is our policies, but the actions that's taken is at the student handbook level. So I would ask that from now on, each year, those handbooks get approved, and that way we would have consistencies in our buildings, you know, going forward, and parents would see this is what happens. You know, it's not in policy speak, it's more in handbook, and this is what happens when an incident happens. And I think that can go at least help the transparency in that people's expectations. So I think that's important. And we used to do it many moons ago, and things went away, and I think it's something that needs to come back, so. And it, things went away and I think it's something that needs to come back, so. Did you have something to make?
Yep. Well, I have a few comments. First of all, how long have you been on the job?
Going on my fifth month here.
Okay, fifth month. You've had a lot to carry. And for that reason, I want to make a few comments just to back up and support some of the work that was done prior to when you were here. First of all, thank you. Thank you to everybody who's been working on this. Thank you to the community who has showed up and used your voices and the people who've been emailing. One of the reasons I want to do this is in the equity work and the hard conversations I've been a part of, and I would say with a particular focus in the last 18 months of the re-intensified board work, the one thing I'm learning is that the bolder you get and the further you try to push it, the more likely you are to A, make a mistake or misspeak, and B, uncover areas that aren't being addressed yet or that need more work. So the more we peel these layers away and work, the more these things are going to happen. And every time we find something that isn't reaching or having the impact we want, we carry that burden and that weight and we return back to the table to try and do that work. We, the, the deeper we go on our work, the more we get pushback from members of our community who don't want to see any of this work done. And we've had police in our meetings since August, not because of issues that we're dealing with the last few weeks, because of people who've come in with their own agendas about what should or shouldn't be taught in schools, how we should handle health causes or whatever else. And our, our meetings have escalated that way. And we can take that pushback. But that shows us that we've been doing it. We also know that the community does want to focus on what's going forward. And I want to thank you for laying all of those out. I want to thank our leadership in our surrounding communities who are going to stand shoulder to shoulder with us because we all know this is not a district-only issue. And if we're going to make progress, we have to do it with the people around our entire community going forward. I, I want to touch on two things that happened in the past, even though we're looking forward prior to your coming. One is the Equity Resolution. We worked with 25 stakeholders from different marginalized groups, students of color, staff, parents, communities, members, people who represented LGBTQ audiences, et cetera. And they developed that work that was hours and hours and months and months of work back and forth. And I want to thank them. And they actually read that resolution to the board to demonstrate it was their work, not something the board sat down and wrote from our chair and our perspective. And if anybody thinks that resolution was done to just check a box, I would like to just reference those 25 people who put that work into it, shared their stories, and showed up every time to do that work. The second thing I want to address is your position. During a tough budget year this year, we made the hard decision to eliminate the second highest position in the school district, our Assistant Superintendent, so we could navigate the budget. In the same breath, not in the same breath, but in the same budget year, we asked for and approved the hiring of a director-level superintendent cabinet position for equity and inclusion. And I'm so very glad that we did that. And that's a sign of where proactive matters. And I want to say, I want to appreciate you for that. This is maybe the first time that Prior Lake has had a board that was willing and able to dig in and do that work and make a public statement that we heard the community wanted, that said, we not only want to support this work, we're going to demand the work. And that gives greater empowerment to our superintendent and to her staff to carry it out. I don't know that the votes were there before. But this time with a six to one vote, we passed that resolution and we're able to get it going and build on that. We've all done different levels of involvement, I know that. Carrying and committed conversations, participating in and facilitating at the Savage Event, participating in at the invitation of our very brave Coalition Teachers of Color, their training sessions, becoming allies, going to all their extra events, learning at every opportunity we can get. Individually, reading books, going to training sessions, and one relationship at a time trying to hear stories and make a difference. There are different groups in the community who have their own opinions and would like to change who sits in the school board. It might be because of health reasons and masks. It might be because they don't want equity work done. Or it could be that it, we're not feeling like we're having our equity work done fast enough. I can tell you that I'm sitting with a team of people who has been committed and will own and be accountable for where there's more work that has to be done. This is not a group afraid of hard conversations. We will continue to create those opportunities. And I'm grateful for you to help us kind of organize that as we go forward. I, when I ran for school board three years ago, I did not know what I was getting into and I don't know if any of us did. And it's been great. It's been the honor and challenge of my life. And when we find where our work is not reaching students, it is a burden that we all carry. And I want to say that loud and clear. And when I ran at that public forum and I see people in the room who I think were maybe there that night three years ago, I said that my biggest motivator was a concept, I think it's a South African concept called Ubuntu. We are who we are through our experience of other people. I am because you are. We are all connected. And if we are not all taken care of, if we are not all safe, and if we are not all loved, it will not make a difference. And you have people who believe that. The deeper we do the work, the more we'll make mistakes and the more we'll uncover that needs to be done. But I also have a firm conviction that the deeper we do the work, the more likely we are to make a difference for our students and hopefully in turn the world. So I want to thank you, Sam, and everybody who's been doing this.
Thank you, Michael. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Next up is calendar adjustment. No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Just recognize time, so.
Yeah.
Okay. Members of the board, I'm here on two items related to the calendar this evening. First one is an adjustment to this year's calendar, the 21-22 school year. And as we have moved forward, and this is specific to the high school, just wanted to share with you, as they have moved forward with their implementation of Laker Time, which now has turned into a event that occurs on a weekly basis, more or less a weekly basis, with a few exceptions throughout the year. And we do not have that intervention time where all students are required to attend. So we cannot record that as time in school. And so we needed our school calendar to reflect that. So the, in your packet you see noted the days of the school year in which Laker Time is happening at the high school level. It's noted on the calendar and that is to reflect that, that adjusts our number of minutes, but we are well within, or number of hours of instructional time. We are well within the amount of time. But we needed to bring that forward and share that with you. And that's an adjustment for this school year. So before I move on to next school year's calendar, any questions around that specific topic?
Any questions? No?
I don't think so. Okay. And the next item is the 22-23 school year. And just a few highlights to note there. First of all, in October, we have a Staff Development Day now, not occurring on the Monday following the typical Education Minnesota break, but instead occurring on the Wednesday of that. And the intent behind that is to not interrupt another shortened week in the first, those very important, all-important first few weeks of the school year. So with this calendar, you'll see that, different from years past, we will have the Staff Development Day, the Fall Staff Development Day will take place on that Wednesday. And then we will be in a full five-day week the following week. The other adjustment there, and in that particular day, will allow our school year to end one day sooner in June at this point. Then the other thing to note is with regard to our Winter Professional Development Day, we put that earlier in the winter, in January, as opposed to February, under the idea that, so we've aligned that with the Martin Luther King Day, which was already a no student, was a no student, no staff day. We felt important to do our professional development work earlier in the year versus as the year went on. And so we are doing that in this calendar for 22-23. The only other thing to note is that we also had been hearing from the high school and middle school, a desire to have sixth grade only first days of school and ninth grade only first day of school. And so that had been something that had been in the works and been conversation, but hadn't been yet to the calendar. We brought that to our Calendar Subcommittee and wired the calendar to reflect that. So again, we calculated our number of instructional hours based upon that. So the first day of school following Labor Day weekend would be a sixth grade only at the middle school level, focused on transitioning those students well and making sure all students, we do have a program, have had a program at the middle school level called the Web Program, but that's always been the week prior to Workshop Week. And while we've had strong attendance at that, it hasn't been 100% attendance at that. And we want to ensure that all students have that fully successful transition day. Likewise, at the high school as well, similarly, their ninth grade orientation had been during Workshop Week. And not all students, either as ninth graders able to participate or as student leaders of the upperclassmen able to lead, helping those students transition. So making this be the calendar that reflects that. So those are the major changes. Otherwise, it's a fairly similar calendar to our current school year. So any questions on that this time?
Any questions, comments? No?
No.
Okay.
And then my final topic is the middle school. Do a quick presentation on this. Just, we brought this to District Curriculum Advisory in October, got their approval to proceed at District Curriculum Advisory. We're planning to have this on the November study session to just update the board. But we are moving forward after a lengthy study that began in earnest last January. As we were preparing for the upcoming school year, we had some conversations about decisions that we had made during the, during last year. And one of which was around every other day classes. As we had gone away last year from every other day classes due to our learning models between hybrid and in-person and distance, we explored the possibility of minimizing the number of every other day classes. And we got feedback from various stakeholder groups, including our students and parents, around that and the desire to minimize every other day classes. And also the desire to make sure that we had other course areas that we hadn't looked at, our course offerings at the middle school level for over 10 years, that we wanted to take into account. And we wanted to make sure we had alignment with current state standard requirements, current trends and best practices across the metro. So one of the things we looked at with regard to every other day courses is where were other schools offering that? And they were limiting it to physical education and music offerings in most cases. So we are moving forward with a proposal to do that. So again, here's a summary of the work that we did and how we went about engaging in that work during the spring and summer of '21. And we brought forward our, in the fall, as we brought our staff back this fall, scheduling models that their colleagues had looked at throughout the summer. And we presented it to the middle school and took it to, through, as I mentioned, the District Curriculum Advisory. And here are a few of the highlights of that. We paired FIDE and music. We did a significant reduction in every other day courses. We have a balance of course offerings within the World Language Department, which means that all students' first opportunity for World Language includes all world languages at the seventh grade level in our current offerings of World Language, which include French, Spanish, and German. We needed to align with new standards in physical education, which required having a ninth, or eighth grade requirement of physical education, which we did not have. We wanted to maintain the continuity of music consistent throughout the year. So we created a structure that does that. And then finally, making sure that all students, as they enter the middle school, have access to coding in sixth grade. So we call it the Wheel, the elective classes that they get as required electives, as quarter-long courses that includes coding, includes technology, education, family consumer science, and health as the quarter. So those are the, those are the changes that we are making to the course offerings that are going to be coming out to our students here in January, February. And as you can see here highlighted, we'll do that registration process in February. We'll plan the staffing and scheduling for that. And then we'll reconvene after we've been at it for a year to study its effect and make sure that it's meeting the desires that we set out to do.
Okay. Any questions on that?
I just want to make a statement. So thank you for redefining the term access to coding. I sent an email about that earlier. But we did talk about this in the, in the Curriculum Advisory. And it's, it's a good change. So thank you very much.
Okay. Next up is Board Policy Review.
Sure, well.
Yep.
Just wondering about the time and the truth and taxation. Is there, is there a way we could move these policies to the board meeting? And then we could move forward and have that truth and taxation? I know we scheduled that at 6:00 and we're running late, just if anybody's here for just that portion.
Is there anyone here that wants to speak? There is, okay. Yeah, we can certainly.
Do you make a motion?
I don't think so because it's, we can if we want.
I think we would.
Okay.
Study session, yeah.
Awesome.
We should amend the agenda when we start the meeting.
Okay. So we'll adjourn, we'll take a couple-minute break. And we'll be back here to start the meeting. Okay?